Let me be the order, I can't be on being here tonight. You see so many faces here. You would please bow your head, we have communication. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, asking for your guidance, asking for wisdom, and asking you to help us make the right decisions for this county. We ask you to bless the citizens of this county, and bless our servicemen and women, both here and abroad, and keep them from harm's way. We thank you, O Lord, for the many things and blessings that are still upon us, that we have to endure. We ask that you help us to stay on that path that keeps us open, that keeps us free, that keeps us with you in our thoughts. We ask, O Lord, that you be with us, guide us, help us. We ask in your holy name, amen. All right. First item is the minutes from the meeting of September the 16th.
You approve.
Motion for approval, we'll have a set. Any discussion? In favor of the motions, if they've come raising hand. Motion carries. Uh, one thing that's not on the agenda that I'd like to bring up at this point in time. At our last meeting, we did read a proclamation for the American Legion, and we had several members who are here tonight with their stadia and their hats and their shirts and whatnot, and we wanted to recognize them. We have signed the proclamation, which I will give to you, as they wanted a photo opportunity, so if y'all would come stand right here in front of us, commissioners, you stand here behind me. Go ahead, I have a question. All right. All right, this is the proclamation, which we read last time, sorry, you were not here, but it has been officially entered. And again, we thank you very, very much, all of you, for what you do for us, what you have done for us, and you let us know. Thank you very much. Let's give all the big game. All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your service. All right, next thing is the appearance of citizens. Linda Dawson, District One representation.
Linda Dawson, House sixty-five, Lister, Hampton. There's several people here tonight from District One, and we're just concerned because this District One seat has been vacant since July. Y'all know that, I know that, you know the history. Y'all just carry on like business as usual, there's never any mention of the District One seat, it's just business as usual, meeting after meeting, and we are concerned that there's no representation at all. We know the situation, but you never mentioned what may be happening to do something about it. And would it bother any of y'all if you didn't have representation in your district? Begging, would it bother you?
I would go to one of the other commissioners.
Well, we are doing that, we are, and we appreciate what y'all are doing to fill the void, but it's just not the same. We're just very concerned that there is no representation of our own, and we know, y'all know, that there was more than one applicant for the seat, and when the first applicant turned it down, did y'all do anything about asking the governor to go to another applicant, to do something about filling the seat in the interim? Since we don't know how long the interim is going to be at this time, has it been anything to ask the governor what he may be going to do? Or is it just going to be business as usual until, until? We just want to know, we're all in a quandary. We would just like to know, that's all. And we do appreciate what the rest of y'all are doing, we understand that y'all have your own districts, and that you're doing what you can to help fill the void, and we do appreciate it. I had to go to Jim, and Jim has helped me, and I truly appreciate it. But if you are representing your district, I'm sure your district is going to come first, especially if it's, say, getting a rotate, you're probably going to get your rotate before you go suggest getting a District One rotate. I'm just saying that District One is just as important as the other districts, and we'd like to know what may be around being, what's going to happen. We feel like we're just kind of being left out, and we'd like to know what we may be able to expect as far as getting our own representation, that's all. Got any suggestions for us?
Let me make one comment, first of all, just so that it's not misinterpreted. Just because you do not have, District One does not have a representative here, does not mean that they've taken backseat roads or something like that, you've already decided all of that ahead of time, and trying to do things equally across districts, and continue to do that. As far as making any other comments, I'll ask Mr. Taylor, it's out of our hands. John, if you wish to say a thing about that.
The only thing, I think that we, you know, the process is beyond what this commission can do. Proper notices have been given, and it is in the governor's discretion as to whether and when he names a replacement, and because of the pending litigation that is forthcoming, I don't think that it would be appropriate to speculate on what would happen this and what would happen that, but that is a matter that rests with the governor. Certainly, if you want to contact the governor, you can certainly do so to do that, but I don't think that any, beyond that, the commission needs to get involved in coming on the process because of the ongoing litigation that's involved.
Another question that has been asked is that are all the decisions that are being made without District One representation, are they as legal as if a District One representative were in the seat? And I said, yes, I'll bring that question as well, so I'm bringing it.
I'll answer that one, yes ma'am, it is, and I think that you'll find that the commission, while they may represent people in one district, that does not mean that every other commissioner on this district has a obligation to do what is best for all the citizens of Harris County, regardless of whether they are from that commissioner's district or not from that commissioner's district. I think you see a lot of votes that come out of here, that one commissioner will, in that district, will push it, and it will not, it will not pass, some others where the other commissioners will vote something, and a commissioner from a particular district will oppose it. And simply because somebody opposes it, does not, something that rises in this district does not mean that he is a dictator or has complete control of the whole district. This body is obligated to represent all the citizens of the county, to the best interest of all the citizens of the county, regardless of whether they're from that district or not from that district. But that is, and I think that's what this board has been doing, and has always done, since I've been involved with them for the past fifteen years, and I think that there's certainly been other times where we've had, only, at one time, we only had three people that were attending the meetings, and were, and they did, you know, did a good job, and I think that's what this group is trying to do, is say, somewhere difficult times, you don't see many commissions face, and so I think beyond saying that, I think that we need to leave it at that because of the pending litigation.
And let me add too, I've had a couple of calls from people in that district, and I'm more than happy to go out and visit, do whatever I can do, I'm sure any of the other commissioners are the same way, if someone has a concern, then feel free to bring it to us.
I'll say the same, I represent this, I really represent all Harris County, and that's the way I look at it. And I've never turned down a call or request of anybody from anywhere in the county, because they may reside in a different part of the county outside of my district. And I don't want to go too far beyond what Ken attorney said, but we have, we have done all we could to push the issue of representation, we just, I think maybe all of it's state law, and we've done what we could to push it along, but there's also less that we can do. But I share your concerns, it's not the ideal way of doing things, there should be five of us up here rather than four, but we just have to play the cards of redoubt. I appreciate your concern.
And I believe it won't be out for my services to District One. I love you very much.
Scott Moyn, one-four-one-two-six, Highway one sixteen, I'm not proud.
Scott, I talked to, talked to twice since our last meeting, I don't know that I've got anything other than that you have not started on it, we're in the ditch up at the top, all of their stuff, still saying they're going to be digging it out and putting in the trains that will take it from the finished goods shipping dock.
When was the last time you talked to them?
I talked to them this morning. I even talked, it's either Friday or today, I think it was Friday, Friday I talked to them.
I thought the other weekend, they were actually doing that. I mean, what it looked like.
He told me he thought that he had started, I think Greg was out there today, didn't see.
Of course, I could go back in the shipping dock, because I didn't want to get shot.
Why do you think you'd get shot?
They process meat there.
Tell me you got a sample of water, won't you?
Last Red Pro has had a call in, he had something else come up, we rescheduled for this Monday at ten. And one of the things, we're going to continue to try and push G dot, G dot is to close that cross train, so you won't have that flow coming across and under.
Both of them?
Both of them, you got one big hump on it.
Right.
It's about a twenty-four inch.
About really?
And then there's, I think, an eighteen inch.
Yeah.
Over eighteen inch.
So where is it going to go, then?
It's going to go down the side to, and then to their property that they own down the road.
Just wash out on that fifteen acres?
I'm not quite sure, unless you want to put a retention plot in.
I don't see why they can't be, have to put a retention plot in there, I can't see them just turn it loose over there like that.
Turn it loose on you down.
I know, but, and I appreciate that, but that's not necess, I might put it on somebody 's side, that's what I'm thinking too. Have y'all contacted the PPD at all?
Yeah.
And they said we're concerned, but there's not really much we can do.
That's why we're having to do the water sample. Harris County's having to get that done, and then if that water sample turns up something, PPD then said they could come in.
Do you remember who you talked to?
PPD, I want to say Shirley, I remember it was a female, she's an area representative.
That's about all we have to report on this.
Plus, I'm anxious to see how that turns out, if they turn it that way. But I think I figured out what the loud noise was, I've been here at night when they really ramped up cleaning, I think it's that chirper, because it sounds just like when you throw a limb in a chirper that, and this, we got to do something about that noise.
Well, three months' supply of cardboard is all they have left, and then they'll switch over to the gas, and the reason, and I had a question, why, why aren't you, you know, just recycling the cardboard? Apparently, they have bought that cardboard.
They bought the cardboard.
So they're an investment in that, so when that investment is expended, they're obviously not going to recycle something they paid for. Then my understanding is they're going to switch the big boiler over to gas too, and that noise should be gone.
No.
Yeah, the little boiler, the little, they've already switched over, so they are running gas on it, but not on the big one, we just found that out this week, last week, they had a three-month supply. So we are, actually Greg has done some checking, and we're not through with it yet, but just to see what we might be able to do in the way of recycling that cardboard, and if there's enough in it to cover their cost on it.
Well, what I would like to present.
Then they can switch over soon.
Well, I don't think we're going to do that, but what I would like to do is then build up the stockpile, and then go back and burn the cardboard, just for an alternative fuel source, so that we give them an incentive, quit dealing with cardboard, and stick with the quieter, cleaner fuel.
But they are going to go to gas?
They are going to go to gas.
No doubt.
Yeah, and that's still, they're going.
Well, I hope so, since they brought that line in here just for, you know, they had to have it.
Yep.
For their production.
Right.
I guess you've answered pretty much what I need to know so far, but like I said, I don't know how that's going to turn out.
We will continue to be in touch with, Greg and I are contacting them. They know we're looking, and they know we want to answer, so.
Are they being more cooperative?
As far as I know, they've been, they've been very cooperative with me, and even sharing that, well, we had three months' supply left, and I said, well, so does that mean in three months, you can switch over? And they said, yes, we can use that cardboard, we can switch. And they did notice something that I hadn't noticed when I was driving through the parking lot today, they have put trash cans out there, and have a screened enclosure around it, so that the litter that misses the can will fly away, I don't, I don't remember seeing those before, so, and maybe.
Well, they do, they do real good on litter, in their area in front of that plant, I mean, they'll pick up that side of the road on, but they still, you know, we talked about last time, they did come and pick up, I guess the prisoners did, and shortly after that, I mean, you see the styrofoam plates and bolt and all that stuff, and I know that's them doing it, but it's not bad right now, and it's held up fairly well. But what will you have to do, if y'all plug up the covers on the road, what will y'all have to do to ditch it on the other side?
They're going to have to carry the water, as the, as the, and the natural flow of the water, as it would go through the drain, which then drops down the hill, and that's our understanding, they owe them that additional acreage. And they did something, unless I'm misinterpreting, they did show some willingness to divert the water there, so.
Yeah.
But the way it's laid out now, is the water going?
Well, we really haven't covered that one, to be honest with you, and they said the other month, they would be willing to accept it on their property, but what that means, I don't know, we have to ask.
Part of that's the G dot issue as well.
That's, that's what I really want to know right there, what, what happens afterwards. You know, I don't want to turn it on the neighbor.
I know that, you made that.
Because there's a lot of water flows through there, I don't know if they realize how much, because I don't know if you, like that bench we got the other day, those weeds in the neighbors where that first one is, you know, they're six, they're tall, they're flattened in. Plus, there's, the undergrowth was dead, you know, where they washed it out through there. I mean, it's, it's a lot of water, so.
Would be aware of that, yes or no? Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Sorry, Harrison, sign up to speak about Jason Tatum.
All right, Mr. Harrison.
Robert Harrison, one fifty-nine, A. Chevrolet. I'm glad to see you, my father died in childhood, I joined that post, I did this several, stayed in it for about thirty years. It kind of went down, they brought it back up, but I never had to start, I had to stop for something, it seemed like that, I wished I could stop this and build that down now, but right now they can't. Last week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the smell of, sense of, is the worst that has been in my lifetime, and I've lived there for seventy-eight years. Father was, she said, I didn't know, she lived right across the street, she also had these, this and that, she lives closer than Scott does, she also had three pummes and stuff. I don't find, okay, enforce the laws, the public nuisance, and stuff. That smell zone is moved out to about two and a half miles now. Berkeley East Post is about two and a half miles from that plant, or maybe not quite that far. But we don't keep on, keep going, we don't be able to. One of these days, we're going to travel around the world, yeah, like where the, then talk about incorporation, the third study, that's what I'm, I think, we got a lot, that's what I've heard lately, is to help us fund raises, get up some money, hire some attorneys, get it upstairs in the corporate, but we're getting nowhere, yeah, nowhere. What is the gas company going to do, what they said they was going to do, and they went around knocking on doors, soliciting business, they cut a trench through my yard, laid a line. I would say they bought on the road, but it was not, they handled it through, that was a, a trip, put the paper up about like this, I got a speed bump in front of my house But they're not tied in. Well, it's right around the corner, not the tank, the tank is empty, I was hoping I wouldn't have to buy any gas, if I was going to buy it, I would have thought about the summer when it was cheaper, but just like I'm going to have to buy propane gas. But they come knocking on my door, soliciting this, and it's not something I'm signed up, people on B and K Street, they better call them, they haven't even run one line, there you go. Are we going to get gas this one, or are we going to be next one?
Yeah, I don't know what they were telling you, nor do I know what their schedule is, Bobby, but I'm sure they'd be, they would be happy to tell you what it is, and the next time I, I'll make sure I can call them and just ask them.
Two years ago, they had to have this gas, or they're going to move that expansion to Montgomery Road, they spent out there almost six months, and they not even using it. I feel sorry for the gas companies, they spent a lot of money out there, and they shut it no gas.
I'm sure you're right.
I don't think they can get the contractor back, because they brought no in money for laying the line, and, you know. Gas is always, the line is all the way around, they surf, up D Street to them, so, but it's not tied in. Nobody's got anything in the yard, they just got stuff out, four ditches on the front aisle, it's out there about two foot deep, and after about four weeks now, nobody's been back, but they bought on the road, that's over ditch. I don't, I don't think it's that bad, I'd like to have, hurt them for money, because they're not selling any gas like that was told in Joe's house. I don't know. But we don't keep on, keep them out.
I'll ask you a question next time I talk. All right, thanks, guys. Next item on the agenda is the second reading of the unsafe building ordinance, I'll leave their copies on the back table, I'm going to pick one up, it says the second reading. Any comments from citizens out there in favor of this, any comments in favor of it?
Well, Roger, twenty-nine, seventeen, that's the road, call him. Last meeting, we supposedly had a first reading, and I was here, and I did not hear the first reading. When I receive it, be on the internet, everybody don't have it, everybody not, you live, that's unrecognized, by state orders, being media, and we don't, we did not get the first reading. So that open record law has not been applied.
So it's on the back table?
Yes, that's tonight, that wasn't the first reading.
That's right, it's there tonight, we do not, never have read ordinances.
We have what I was conditioned.
Because some of them are very, very lengthy, that's what happens to me about ten pages long, I'm sure people don't want to have me sit up here and read something, and they really can't, really can't.
Perhaps the same page is too long, maybe, maybe I'll be shorting down, you know, that, I don't want to give a reason why, that we've done, to add more and more laws and orders and everything, the property owners, this would block subdivision, or, and subdivision, that subdivision ordinance or charter, and so I kind of found a total missing circle there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Yes, sir?
I'm in opposition, because I'm not represented. I'm in opposition because I'm not represented. I'm not gonna, I hope they might not have to wait your long, it's not represented.
I think you need to burn off the January.
Bobby, Mr. Taylor's already said this is, this is legal. What we have here, we've operated for, someone's absent for a night, still good, so that's, we're, we're.
Samo, samo.
All right, all right, therefore, is there any other comments? All right, then we are through with that.
You may, before I start, you may wish to go ahead with your seven thirty hearing.
All right, go ahead and start the, the hearing. This is a, what I'll do is, is read, I'll call right now. Probably hearing in order, I'll read the application, and the county manager will present a session. Then we will entertain comments from individuals in favor of the application. After that, we will entertain comments from individuals in opposition to the application. After that, it'll be any summary or rebuttal, or any final comments. And then close, after hearing from, we'll have heard from the citizens at that point in time. Well, then close the public hearing, after commissioners have asked any questions they might have, and then we will take a vote. This is a second reading of zoning text amendment, which is adding to definitions. Corn maze, says it may include a snack shop as an accessory use under farm tour, educational. In addition to that, it may include a snack shop as an accessory. Under farmer's market of the same one, the same definition, may include a snack shop. And then we add to it snack shop, which is the selling of prepackaged sealed foods, which require no further warming, heating, refrigeration, or preparation, and/or the selling of prepackaged sealed non-alcoholic beverages, which require no further warming, heating, or preparation. That is the text amendment that been presented. It went before the planning commission, they recommended approval. It is an application of the Harris County Board of Commissioners. And with that, I turn it over to our county manager, Greg Wood, to make any comments.
I'm not sure if it had anything else, we did a good job, Dave. Chairman? Really much for me, Dave? Other than the fact that this was an addition that we felt would be beneficial to these types of things, having them, especially as far as having green stuff and things like that, when people out in the heat and want to take a break to sit down and have a break and make big snacks. So we felt this would better serve the folks that are, are utilizing these types of activities. And that's about all I can answer.
All right. I will then open the, open the floor to comments of anyone who is in favor of this application. Anyone who's in favor of the application. Hearing none, I will then open the floor to any individuals who wish to make comments in opposition to the application. Ms. Stroud?
Ms. Stroud, four oh four Hopkins, former of Plano. It's my understanding that, that the agritourism sections of the Harris County zoning ordinance were developed to encourage the retention of farm activities to supplement farm income and encourage compatible agricultural-related businesses in rural areas. The snack shop, to me, is a purely commercial enterprise, which is going to be allowed just in agricultural zoning. In order to bring this use more in line with its agricultural setting, it's my suggestion that a snack shop be required to vend Georgia-produced products as at least half of its inventory. This is similar to the requirement that a farmer's market sell at least fifty percent of the produce grown at that location. The enforcement of the Georgia-produced requirement would be no more difficult than enforcing the fifty percent requirement for produce. It's really easier to repackaging than to determine where a squash or tomato has been grown. The Georgia-produced requirement would support other Georgia businesses, help the economy and jobs in our state. It might even help other farmers and small businesses which produce these products in other rural areas. This would at least give some rationale for having a strictly commercial enterprise in an agricultural zoning area.
Thank you, Ms. Stroud. That, you know, this one, a lot of the packaging these days for things such as soft drinks and whatnot just simply stake the, under the authority of the parent company and wherever they're located, even though they may, may be produced in the state. So I, I don't know that that's a valid way of checking it, because certainly that's a suggestion. Any other comments against? All right. Greg, do you have any, any comments?
Let us points are, are well taken, I think. And just as far as, as you noted, it'd be very difficult to enforce, and this is indeed an accessory use to a agritourism, not a priority use.
Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments? Hearing none, then we'll close the public hearing, and we entertain the motion.
May the motion have been approved?
Motion for approval, do I have a second? Second. Do I have a second discussion? On the favor of the motion to approve, we simply have a rating demand. Motion carries. Okay, so we will go back to the end of the second reading. Mr. Taylor, you want to make some comments?
Yes, sir, I think it might be a good idea to just kind of walk, walk you through the, the process and what this proposed unsafe building ordinance is to do. You know, it, while it goes on for a ways, it, and makes it complicated, but it basically, what it basically does is provides a mechanism, which you don't have currently, for addressing and correcting unsafe, dilapidated, unsanitary structures and conditions in, in the property. And the authority is, is granted by Georgia statute to do it this way. Like I said, you currently don't have, have a, a mechanism to, to do it. When this first started, and we first dropped the first draft, it was several, a month and a half, two months ago, there were some photographs that we, that attached, that the code enforcement and community development had, had gotten. And where we had buildings that were, where the roofs had fallen in. And they were, could not get, some of the landlords or the owners were absentee, and couldn't get them to, to do anything, and yet, these buildings are still there. There can be health hazards, they can be, and they undoubtedly were, were, fall under this, and this ordinance would be something that would be used to require these people to clean up and to fix up these buildings. And what the ordinance addresses is dwellings, dwellings or structures that are unfit for human habitation. Those were certainly the, that, and that's, you know, this is not to go out and, and go up and down the, the street and say, well, look, you know, you need, your, your house needs a paint job, we're, you know, gonna require you painted, or we're, you know, gonna require you to cut your front, your grass, or quit parking in the, in the back of the house out of the driveway, that's not what it's for. It's designed to, to, to get to dwellings that are unfit for human habitation, that people won't do anything about. Or it's for structures, commercial or industrial or business use structures, that are not in compliance with the code. And you certainly, you can unfortunately have some of those where people coming in and out of, out of buildings that, that are used for, for business uses, and they're not in compliance with the, with the building codes, and they're, you know, there's, there's subject to, you know, injuries and, and people being, being hurt. Or it also addresses vacant, and vacant property that's used for, for drug crimes. And certainly, as I indicated, I talked to the sheriff, and he says, yes, there's definitely a use to that. Unfortunately, you know, we'd like it to not be there of drug abusers everywhere. Not so many probably here than some of the metro areas, but it's still an issue. And the sheriff is, said he wholeheartedly agreed with it. And also, what the ordinance does is, is, is direct to, to structures that are endangered, that is constituted endangerment to public health and safety because of unsanitary or unsafe conditions. And where you've got septic tanks that are non-functional, where you've got houses that are just, just completely nasty. And unfortunately, we, we don't, you and I don't see it, but they're, they're there. And they, they are, are just, they're really, really, really bad. And that's what this is for, is to get, provide a mechanism for the county to, to take care of these, these, these situations. And it, like I said, it's completely authorized by Georgia law, and it grants the counties and municipalities the right to do this. And this, this ordinance tracks that Georgia statute. Now, what the, the purpose of it is, is that, to abate a nuisance or to stop a nuisance, you have to have injunctive power. And the only, the spirit courts have, have a power to join somebody. But for maintaining a nuisance, but the authority to abate a nuisance, that is to require somebody to take affirmative action to, say, clean up or to tear down an unfit dwelling, or to repair an unfit dwelling, that is the authority that is delegated and by the statute, and authorized by the statute, and the county through this ordinance delegates that power to the magistrate court. There can be an injunction relief, but it's, it's an ordered law, there's no authority to issue injunction. And actually, it is what's called in-reim action against, against the property itself. In-reim is the property itself. You have other type of actions in the law called in-ursonum, which are against a person, individual. But this is against the, the property itself, because some of these people, you can't find them. You know, you got, they're, it's their property, they, you know, they, they move, they, the heirs don't care a thing about it, somehow don't know they own it. And so that's where this is directed, as an in-reim action against the pro. Now, the process by which this, this gets started is that you, under the ordinance, the delegating the enforcement, the initiation of the enforcement process to the, to the director of the community development ordinance designated. Or if five citizens, at least five residents of the county come in and, and make a complaint that a piece of property is, is unfit, is unfit for human habitation, is unfit for commercial use, being vacant, being used for drug crimes, or it's an endangerment to public health and safety because of unsanitary, unsafe conditions. Those five people complain, then the action, the community, director of community development has to start. And the county was, is authorized to go forward to, to enforce this ordinance and to require that the nuisance, the property be repaired or the, and a remedy be given. It starts with a petition in magistrate court. Due process follows this, and you file a petition in magistrate court, and the, the, there has to be some testimony regarding the condition of the property, the value of the property. That's all addressed in, in the, in the ordinance. And then there's a hearing in magistrate court, and by which the court will then review all the evidence. And then they find, can, can make a finding. Like the magistrate court can find that it's unfit for human habitation, based on the evidence that's there, that's been presented, that it's unfit for, you know, commercial abuse, use, and not in compliance with the applicable building and zoning, applicable building codes, that's vacant, been used for crimes, or the fourth one, it constitutes an endangerment to public health and safety. If they find that, then, then there's some remedies. Now, the court does not have to find that, based on the evidence, the court can say, no, we don't believe that this, this exists, and the burden of proof hasn't been carried, and so therefore, they go, they go on about the business. But if they do find that the, that meets any of those qualifications, then the court can do a couple of things. One, the court can order the owner to repair the property within a specified period of time. A lot of times, and I'm sure probably what, this way this will actually work, more than likely, a community development will contact the property owners, or attempt to contact the property, property owners, and get them to do it voluntarily. And will be used only, this will only be used in a, in a case of, of last resort. But if the owner says no, or the owner says, yeah, I'd get around to it, and never, and never does, then the court can order the repair, the owner to repair it within a specified period of time. Or if it's so bad, like the ones that you saw, the photographs, and some others that I have seen just riding up and down the roads of Harris County, they can require the owner to demolish it and remove the structure if it's not, if it can't be repaired at a reasonable cost. Certainly those that you saw the other day in those photographs, you know, it would cost more to, you'd have to build the whole building over again than, than you could repair it. Or you could give some sort of combination. Now, I mean, there's one, one point I need to, need to make here. That these structures, that the ordinance provides for a, an exemption for agricultural property, for buildings, those type of things that, old tenant houses on a piece of property that are being used for agricultural purposes, those are exempt. So if you've got, if you've got a farm and you're starting to hay in the barn, and, you know, and the barn's otherwise inhabitable, it is exempt. You cannot force somebody to, to, to do that if it's being used for legitimate, legitimately, for agricultural purposes. Now, what happens if, if the owner doesn't comply? Well, you know, the failure to comply, the county can then come in and request the court to either have the county repair the property, or more likely, is the situation in two other jurisdictions that we do work for, is, is to demolish it. Now, if you, if you have to go in and demolish it, and take all of the, the building down, hauled it off, then you're gonna be incurring some costs. And the statute, and this ordinance, as, as the statute authorizes, you get, the county will, will have a lien for the cost of repair or the demolition of the property. That lien is superior to all liens against the property, to include mortgages. It's superior to, to any other type of lien against the property, except for one. And that's the lien for, it is for property taxes, and for the failure to pay, pay property taxes. Now, you can leave the lien on record, and then when somebody sells the property, and they go to, go to, to a bank and want to borrow money, first thing the bank's gonna do, say, there's a lien on this property right here, you're gonna have to pay the account. Just like as if they were going to tax this on a piece of property. Now, the, the, if, if, if they don't do that, one option that the, the statute gives you, and this ordinance will, will, will delegate, is the tax commissioner can, can levy on the property and sell it at a, sell it at a foreclosure sale, just as if you were selling taxes. Right now, as you know, if they, they'll pay the taxes, the tax commissioner can. the tax commissioner can throw a series of steps, come in and sell the property on the court has steps, the highest bidder, in order to satisfy the lien. This is the same, can be done the same way. And once that money is paid, the county's reimbursed and you're not out of the money. It costs you to abate, or not to abate, to remedy these unfit dwellings and bringing them in compliance. One other thing that does, that we've added at this end here is an administrative search warrant. And this is not a criminal search warrant, it's an administrative search warrant. And what it does, it expands the county's right to go on property. The county now has a right to go on property, to look at it, to inspect it from it. But it doesn't go so far to say inside the building. And there is some question about whether or not entering an abandoned building or, you know, suppose you go out and the document says, no, I'm not going to let you into it. Then the magistrate, I think, already has the implied authority to issue an administrative warrant to allow our building inspector to go and look inside the property. Maybe find that there are no toilets in the property, that there's no functioning septic tank or it is, you know, totally unfit for human habitation, feeding supply or whatever the case may be. But the ordinance will provide, authorize the magistrate to, the specific authority to issue an administrative search warrant if it becomes necessary. Of course, they would apply the court in writing to do that. Now, after all that said and done, you know, the owner of the property has the right, if he has not satisfied with, disagrees with the finding of the magistrate court for instance, that it's unfit for human habitation, the magistrate issues an order to the county and authorizes the county to demolish the building. If the owner of the property disagrees with that, he has appeal rights. Not appeal rights in the spirit court, and that's not statute. So this is not an ordinance that's designed to do, to come in and harass and give hard time to citizens of the county. It is an ordinance that I think is, certainly from my experience working with the county for the number of years I have, there's been more than one situation where we know that something's unfit for human habitation or is an endangerment to health and safety, but our hands are somewhat tied because we don't have a real remedy to go after. And this provides a streamlined remedy that is authorized by statute that, you know, other jurisdictions use on a fairly regular basis to try to make sure that our dwellings in the county are fit for human habitation and are not invading the public health and safety. And so, that is kind of the summary of the ordinance. I know it may be more than you wanted to hear. At this point in time, there were a couple of changes, editorial changes that were made, suggested, I think, at the last meeting and then the first draft. Those have all been made. And so, the draft is, you approve it, it will become effective on your approval of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, can I entertain a motion?
It's only a motion that'll be approved.
I was going to ask that we table, I had some questions just today that I would like to answer because I'm a constituent in my district. If you could table the vote till the next meeting.
All right. Next item on the agenda, bridge work. We had brief discussion in our last meeting. And Greg, you are prepared to bring us up to date?
Mr. Chairman, I probably tie this into the other bridges, but I checked with the school board. The only bridge that is helping them any issues or disjunctures is the very old one. With the bid prices that we have on the other three bids, we certainly don't have the money to address these bridges at this point in time. What I would suggest is, I have this element because we've already committed to paving some roads, but the following year's meeting to address Mount Airy as far as putting a proper replacement bridge in there and some roadwork there. And perhaps addressing one or two of these other bridges that may be in worse shape. At this point in time, we're going to be out of money just with the three bridges that we're talking about. As a matter of fact, I'm going to suggest that we probably drop one of those bridges, which I will discuss.
Bridge over Mount Airy, I'm pretty sure they're not running the school, so that current bridge.
No, they're not going around them.
Okay, so the concern is they want a bridge over Mount Airy, but they can take the school, I suppose, is that what they want to get?
Yeah, what they'll do is, we've discussed with engineers, it's going to be similar to what we're doing with the mail road and get the salvage beams from the state requested out of the house significantly and be able to span both bridges with a single bridge, raise that elevation, so it doesn't have, it's not an issue with flooding. And then also revise the approaches that we made in the point where you want to pave that and make that a more cut-through road.
Some residents want it and some don't. There's a visual opinion on that. If we do get those spans from the state with that cut-down fence that we have here.
That, no, because that's included in that cost would be the replacement spans.
All right. Next is, I have the Commissioner Lauterma corner on the agenda. It's in order to bring us up to date on the drug court application process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About two or three meetings ago, this commission voted to join Muscogee County for a grant application to establish a drug court here in Harris County. A drug court would be a part of a juvenile court, which would have its purpose to intercede with young people that have issues with drugs in order to, you know, go through the process to make sure they don't stay on that particular track. We have a drug court in Muscogee County, which has been extremely successful, which the recidivism rate of kids that get in trouble again with drugs is extremely low. So it's been a very successful program, one of the most successful in the country. We have these drug courts all over the country. And so, I was certainly interested in having a drug court in Harris County to deal with our young people here that may have problems with drug addiction. So I've got some bad news and some good news. The bad news is that we did not get one. And so, we will not be having a drug court in Harris County in the foreseeable future. The good news, I guess, is that one of the reasons, probably the primary reason that this grant was denied is that we don't have a big enough drug problem with our kids in Harris County, which is kind of disappointing to me because even though it may be fifteen or twenty kids in our entire county, those kids are important. And if we can do something to help them, then I'd like to do so. But nevertheless, the grant was denied and so, we will not be having a drug court here anytime soon. Nevertheless, even with that, there are other grant opportunities out there from time to time. And so, we'll continue to look at that so that we can hopefully get that here on the streets.
Thank you, Commissioner Lauterma. Appreciate that update. It is good and bad, and thank you.
If we have a bigger drug court, then we'll get it.
Any other ordinance? All right, we'll move into the new business section. And we are very privileged to have with us tonight Sergeant Maurice Rains, Georgia State Patrol Post Number Two in LaGrange. He requested to be on the agenda to bring us up to date on the new post that they have constructed. Sergeant Rains?
Thank you, Chairman Rains.
Thank you for being a service call.
Yes, sir. And to the entire board, it's an honor and pleasure for me to come before you tonight to just tell you that we are in on your building. I do know that Harris County desires to build us a building. We are grateful to know that we serve a community that is proud to have the Georgia State Patrol in service to. Just wanted to come by and tell you that we've been in there since the twenty-eighth of May. Things are going well. We still have some kicks to work out, but the building is below eleven thousand square feet. It's cost one point three million dollars and it was all drug money. Did not cost the tax trail a dime. Good news, I've got two new troopers on the sixteenth of September. One of them is from Harris. He was in Newton for a while and he transferred back and that's Trooper McClung. And I'm glad to have him back. In January, I spoke with the commissioner and new help is on the way. So you should see more visibility of the troopers in that area. We service only Troop and Harris and we work about fifteen hundred wrecks a year. And we basically as a serving agent, I will tell you that Sheriff Jolly is very supportive of the State Patrol and we're very supportive of his office and the sheriff. And just wanted to come and share and thank you for the support that you have given us, for fuel. I know that some things have been said, you know, why don't we, we have to exhaust our means first. But it's just good to know that we've got a backup plan if we go to having hicups in that area. And also, I want to commend Ms. Michael, your partner, and Michael for being very supportive with the help of me when I sent her to, she's down there on the spot to get it done. And I haven't even had to sit down with the county manager to ask him for anything here lately. But I just wanted to come out and just share and invite you to come and get your own personal to the facility whenever you want to. I'm there Monday, Friday. If I'm not there, my secretary would be glad to show you around.
Did you give, does that include an invitation to come? Like the young invitation?
Any given time. Wanted to also present to you what we do service in your area as far as Harris County is concerned. I have my business card with my personal cell phone here. If you've got roads in your district where people complain, I will tell you, don't have a problem with you calling, don't have a problem with you giving them a time when the problem exists, but notify people that if we do get a complaint, we're going to respond. We don't care who we catch. But if you do have roads that citizens complain about, feel free to call me personally and I'll have troopers to look into it. And I just wanted to come tonight and just tell you, we are proud of our facility. It's unfortunate it's not here, but you are part of the Georgia State Patrol. We service Harris County, we like to service you, we'll continue to service you. And like I said, I'm going to leave my business card with my cell phone. If you want to call me with any concerns, feel free to do it.
Now, does that count when we're out, we're talking to another trooper at the time?
That's going to be between y'all and what you work out. But I will tell you, just precautionary measure, from September to February, we average about thirty, forty deer wrecks a month in this area. So just be mindful of that. You can tell the citizens that we do encourage the citizen to hit the deer, not leaving the road with the deer. My philosophy on that, anything that doesn't have a license, you can be in the road. But just be mindful of that, that from September to February, we average thirty, forty deer wrecks a month. So just be mindful of that. But like I said, if y'all got questions, I'll be glad to answer any. If not, I'm going to leave my card, some information on what we do for you and what we'll continue to do for you.
Thirty to forty deer hits per month, is that your entire service here or is that just in Harris County?
Harris, this is our service area.
Would you lose one?
Some are trooped in Harris.
Trooped in Harris County?
Correct.
We only service Troop America.
I went by and looked at from the road, your place, it was very nice. There's much improvement compared to the old one. And I want to particularly thank you for all the help you did in trying to get two nineteen a little bit more under control.
Well, what we're doing, what I'm actually sitting in place, not only in two nineteen, but we have problems on one oh three as well. And the problem is people wait till the last minute to go to work and try to make up. And we're sending a strong message about it. And like I said, come January, I'll be almost at ninety percent capacity with manpower. It'll all change. I can assure you that it'll change.
Fair warning.
If there's nothing else, again, thank you for your time. I'm going to leave, he's wanting more of these and I'm going to be honored.
We thank you very much. Certainly, you feel free to call the message and mean some.
Absolutely.
Guaranteed we'll do it, we'll do the service.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Rains. All right, next item on the agenda is Ellersley Park area mapping and topographic survey proposal. Greg?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We requested that Harrison Adams give us an estimate on what it would cost to do the topographic survey at Ellersley Park. We need it for several reasons. One for designing it, for doing the roadway improvements. And if y'all are familiar with it, it has significant topography as far as both horizons and then some fairly deep buildings. This is important to have and that is one, that is why I'm suggesting option two, which not only does the topography, but it also goes out and does the ground proofing to make sure that the docks are connected where they're supposed to be. Take a look at those dams and also give us the information we need to do the right-of-way improvements, which is going to be important to be for people to be in and out of the park. So I'm suggesting the option number two that encompasses all the additional information that's provided to us for fifty-four hundred dollars. And the funding source will be from the sale of the roadway property.
Greg, you mentioned the dams. That property has been there for a long time and I have been on the dam. Does that include just seeing what shape the dams are in and what needs to be done?
No, it'll only give us the slopes and contours. There is definitely one dam that does need some work on it. I think both dams probably need some type of sacking spillway because they don't have a spillway. But those are things as we progress down the road.
I don't know whether, I don't know that they're big enough to, but I do know that for the Safe Dam Act, if there is a potential danger, there's certain things you have to do to maintain growth on those dams and keep it off.
It's probably too late. That includes Jack the Bug, our soil and water conservation representative. He said, once it's, it's six inches in diameter, the roots isn't as likely through the dam. If you destroy the tree, then you're going to leave a void in the dam. That's what I thought.
All right. Any questions, Greg, on that? Do you want to entertain a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion for approval and a second. We have a discussion. All in favor, say the color right in the hand. Motion carries. The next is a request, it's in Commissioner Lauterma's district. I think it's off Happy Road for Country Char Court. They have requested, eighty-two percent of the citizens have requested that we consider accepting that road and paving it, bring it up to county standards. Greg, you want?
It's necessary to pay because of the six.
Well, that's an option.
That was two options.
Yeah, that's an option. Greg, you want to give us any comments on that or?
Actually, I did this, it comes to me, Commissioner Lauterma.
I've been in conversation with one of the residents on there, brother Ben Stoll. Have you? I've had a number of conversations with him about the problems with the road and we discussed the process for having the county accept the road for maintenance purposes and then hopefully get it paved. And I think it's interesting, of course, it's sometimes difficult to get all your neighbors to agree on something, but of all these neighbors, eighty-two percent, nine out of eleven responded yes, they would like to have the county take this road. like to have the county take this road over. And the only two, the other two did not respond. It's not as if they said no, they, for whatever reason, they didn't respond to the request. So, yes, I'd like, I think we've focused on everything we're asking to do to get the process started and I would show the support.
I would think at this point in time, even if they would like to have it paid, we certainly have to follow behind others that we have agreed to pay at this point.
At least get on with this.
Yeah.
From the process.
If it's accepted and Mr. York has the work he needs to do, you start developing a base that's going to make it easier to pay once you get down the road and you also get in the drainage improvements.
Right, about doing the maintenance, even though we might not be a pater right now, it'll make it a lot better road than it is currently. So definitely an improvement.
So, Greg, I mean, this shows a cost of over $24,000, but does that include the upgrades that would be needed, just drainage and whatnot?
With machine and labor, I'm assuming that is because it was towed to box in in gravel. So boxing in tells me he's blading it and putting proper drainage on the side.
He said that's all that would be needed on that road. Cover everything the road's needed at this point.
So no problem?
It's probably in here somewhere, I'm just missing it. What's the distance?
No, it's not in here.
It's not a long, probably a long one. I could tell you. Those are probably the ounces.
Well, I figure these are, they weigh a lot.
Those probably aren't.
Some are five, four.
But they're longer and narrower.
They were done for four, I'm doing.
Right, they were.
The other cable, probably a bigger.
I think the one that, first one that had a tailor, 139, that's two acres.
Okay. All right, well, do you want to entertain a motion?
So for which, for just the?
For acceptance purposes.
For acceptance, acceptance.
For maintenance.
Acceptance of maintenance.
For maintenance.
Okay. Do I have a second? Our second discussion. All in favor, say the color of the hand. Motion carries. Okay, next item is the financial statement for July of this year.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to table the further the financial statement for July until the next meeting.
All right, let's table the next meeting. Next item on the agenda is appointments. We have several to make. Is anyone, is everyone okay with handling them all at once or do you want to handle them authority by authority?
I do have a comment about Reverend James Taylor.
All right.
I know his wife, I called him today because I noticed he was being suggested for two different committees. And so I was going to ask him if he was, I think Nancy talked to him also, if he was willing to do both or preferred one over the other. And his concern was, I think he's certainly willing to do both if it doesn't interfere with his activities as a pastor of church. And when I talked to him, he wasn't sure exactly what dates they made. Anyway, he said that due to his activities at the church, that Tuesdays and Wednesdays, that he wouldn't be able to make meetings on those dates. Or Sundays, I don't think he would get on Sunday anyway. But if they meet on Mondays, Thursdays, and Fridays, he would be able to serve.
I can't deal with dates they meet on. I would provide his name to the, both of those are out of Columbus, so they would let him know about those dates.
He is willing to serve, assuming that he doesn't have a conflict with those dates at church.
All right. The Housing Authority, the resignation of Claudette Boulter. Reverend James Taylor has been suggested for that and is, I guess the caveat that Mr. Lauterma just mentioned, has agreed to do that. Resident of Harris County, retired from the sheriff's office. That term expired October 31, 2016. The New Horizons Community Service Board, state law has been amended to add three elected officials. Executive Director of that board has requested that Rusty Thomas, Rusty Bowden, the mayor of Waverly Hall be appointed to serve from September the 8th of this year to the end of his mayoral term. The other two elected officials are from other counties. Region 7 Board of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities, again, because of a resignation of Claudette Boulter, who we moved out of the county. Reverend Taylor has been suggested for that one and is considered to fill that. That one would expire June 30th of 2015. And then the West Central Georgia Region 7 EMS Council, due to retirement of David McColl, that spot is open and our EMS director, Jimmy Carter, has recommended that Dr. Rob Harris, an orthopedic trauma surgeon with Houston Hospital, be appointed to fill the position. Dr. Harris lives in Harris County and his term would expire June 30th of 2016. Do you entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept all four of these.
All right, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say the color of the hand. Motion carries. Do you have new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jason Johnson has already left, but I did want to make note that, of course, he's the head of our Harris County Chamber of Commerce here and he's recently been recognized by Georgia Trend Magazine as 40 under 40 of the movers and shakers of young people in our state. And I think we should certainly congratulate Mr. Johnson for that recognition. And the article's in the latest edition of Georgia Trend Magazine.
Thank you. I think that's certainly something we should do. Greg, if you pass along that to Mr. Johnson.
Certainly.
And you have new business? All right, then we move to county management portion. The first item is, do we have any interest in CDVG for 2015? Greg?
I'm asking you.
I have a project.
You do?
It's on the.
Okay.
For housing?
Similar to what?
For housing or rooms or?
For other things. That would be similar to what we did in Kings Gap.
All right, if you get this, Greg.
I mean, I just need, if the Commission wants it to go ahead, we have to, have the Commission approval to apply for grants.
The RVRC right now is just asking for interest so they can get their act together.
And it doesn't guarantee we'll get one because, number one, we are currently have an open one and it may not meet the income.
How we did it in the past with Kings Gap was that that was as a, as a disadvantaged community and that's the way it was in Kings Gap. First time we applied for it, just like you know, and we weren't accepting. So, you know, came back and did it the other way and it was accepted.
Sergeant, if it certainly meets the criteria and there's something that would help us and help the residents out there, I'm certain. All right, some interest, yes.
All right, we will move forward with that.
All right, next one, Greg, bids for the roads.
How they came up with this number, I don't know, but it's $1,777,777.77.
I checked the price, is it, it's right?
Sometimes with the devil or something.
This is a tough one. This came in more than we were expecting. However, the roads in question are in dire need. We do have funding from various sources. Right now, we have about $400,000 in peace plots available, but part of that has to go to the bridges. We have another $633,000 expected in for the balance of the fiscal year of peace plots for a total of $1,061,119. Two thousand nine spots, we have 2.7 million approximately in there and we have $465,000 in economic development, which we, some of these different roads can be split up. The road to the industrial park can be paid out of economic development. We also are going to get some funding for the cities and what will have to happen is as we calculate the actual quantities that are put down, then we will have to build the cities based on those. There's some discussion that this is probably higher than what we're going to need based on quantities. We think we can keep the quantities in line. Other than throwing the whole thing out and rebidding, I don't see an option. When I drive down Harris Road, and it's not going to, it's going to be tough to make it through another winter season there. So therefore, I'm recommending that we approve the low bid, CW Matthews, and watch our quantities very closely and try and take down those dollars though.
All right, any discussion? Do you entertain a motion?
I want you to have the bid approved.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it, I have a question.
All right, discussion.
The, I understand the discussion and the motion for the roads, and of course, the next item of business is on the bridges. And the funding source is the same for the, for the road as the bridges.
The lion's share is going to be from Elveig for the bridges and I am going to recommend that we drop one of the bridges. So address that during the next discussion.
Okay, Elveig is 535,000.
Correct, state funding. And some of that's going to be taken up by engineering.
Okay, so Elveig is just for the bridges and not?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say the color of the hand. Motion carries. That is the list that we had previously approved.
Yeah, correct. Mr. President.
All right, next item is bridges. Greg?
We originally went out for eight bridges. During the discussion, during the pre-bid, one of the contractors, who was a former DOT employee, stated that he felt that we were not using our money as well as we could, that rehabilitating those bridges is not going to gain us a lot. He took it to DOT, DOT agreed with him for the most part. We came back with three bridges that we felt we had the best approach to. However, that came in at a bid of $631,791. And that is over our Elveig funding. So I went back to the engineer and asked him which bridge he would recommend dropping to get it closer to our Elveig money. And he said that the Oak Street Bridge is in the better shape of the two, that Jordan rode over Mulberry Creek, had some significant faulting and other issues. And he recommended going with that, which is a little more expensive bridge, but that will cut about $70,000 out of the price tag, which will get us closer to Elveig, but it won't completely, but we have 10% match anyhow. So we still have to discuss it further with the low bidder as far as how we're going to drop the other bridge, because that's actually the repair workers where they get making more of their money as opposed to replacing with the Mayo Bridge, which is the big ticket item. So what I'm proposing is that we negotiate with the low bidder to do Mayo and Jordan over Mulberry Creek and drop Oak Street for a future date.
So is it permissible for us to negotiate with the low bidder rather than having to rebid?
Yeah, well, we looked at it and we went line by line and the low bidder would still be the low bidder even if we dropped any of the items. So we confirmed before we even had that discussion if it would remain the low bidder if we dropped one of the bridges, and yes, it would. The other option is rebid, drop everything, just do bid the Mayo Bridge and only do that. But then we might be a little bit short as far as meeting our Elveig, so balancing act.
All right. Entertained a motion?
I'm going to make the motion, I'm not sure what the motion is.
Do Mayo and Jordan over Mulberry?
Correct.
Okay. That's my.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that for you sooner. The consulting engineer didn't get back to me before I had to run down to Florida because my daughter had been and had her heart hole and then I had to go take care of that situation.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say the color of the hand. Motion carries.
It gets easier the rest of the way. This bid is for three mowers. The low bidder is Anthony's Lawn Mower Repair out of West Point, Georgia for $17,100. We recommend, that's a cost of $5,700 for a mower. But the funds were included in the budget, so we are recommending approval of the low bid of $17,100 to Anthony's Lawn Mower Repair out of West Point.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say the color of the hand.
They are happy with the snap road as opposed to the scag that goes over?
Yes, they met specs. We had them reviewed, they were okay.
Met specs. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say the color of the hand. Motion carries.
The next was for a mulcher blower, where they basically, they use it to blow the hay or the straw when they're doing road work. And a low bid on that was United Riddles out of Columbus for $22,585. And these were both the same ones, so we know we've got a pretty good price on it. Therefore, we are recommending the low, over the low bid of $22,585 to United Riddles out of Columbus.
Are we replacing the mulcher?
Yes, we have all of that on the sun, it's not just on its last legs. I don't know what's been on its last legs.
Are we going to be able to get anything for that?
Salvage, probably. We're just lucky it hasn't taken a limb from one of our operators so far.
Any idea what the salvage amount might be?
Yes, sir.
Open up much.
Both the water department and the road department will be able to.
All right, I have a motion. Second.
Yes, sir.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say the color of the hand. Carries. Next is pre-cast.
So we had difficulty getting this bid through, but we have had to engineer, review it, and this is the proper materials we need. Bid is for $6,040 from Poli Products Company out of Newton, Georgia, and we recommend
All right, so motion and a second. This is covered underneath the CDVG, right?
Correct.
All in favor, say the color of the hand. Here it is.
Okay, I said it was getting easier after we get to this last item. Now that the system is in place and we're finding some shortages as far as focused Now that the system is in place, um, we're finding some, some shortages as far as folks giving us the proper number of radios, or somebody forgetting to order radios. Um, since the bayless were not included in the radios, um, EMS base stations. Um, bottom line is, they also need to get two more towers, uh, one, uh, in Wayverly Hall. What we're actually paying for is not the tower, we're paying for the structure that houses, uh, the equipment, and the equipment that's necessitated for our use. We're not paying for the tower itself. Uh, one is for Harrisville Road, which is, is badly needed. Uh, Commissioner Langston's very familiar with that situation. The other one is the Wayverly Hall, Hall Tower Sack, which we're gonna use an existing tower there. Uh, the forty-nine radio upgrades, when he analyzed the radios that he was going to put in, they were not, they could not upgrade to being, um, a repeater, um, later on, so he opted to buy a more expensive radio, um, but that saves fourteen hundred dollars with having to go buy an upgrade later on, um, and he opted to do that. The, um, miscellaneous equipment at the nine-one, one was unanticipated items as far as installation, and, uh, forty-five thousand dollars for additional radios to the volunteer fire departments that, um, either have gotten additional individuals or just missed some, they're, may, that price may maybe reduce some, if they have working radios to turn in, um, to replace that, they can get a two hundred dollar credit. So, um, bottom line is, we're talking another two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars to finish out the system.
My problem is, um, this requires two additional sites, at sixty-five thousand dollars each, a hundred and thirty, which is half the total, additional total. Yeah, how come we didn't know that we needed these two additional sites before now?
Until they got the system up and running, he said he wasn't gonna, he wouldn't know for sure where the gaps were, um, topography in Harris County. Um, if you, if you feel more comfortable having Mr. Ginn to come in and discuss these items, we can postpone it. Um, I, if you, if you wanted to do that, though, I would, um, Harrisville Road is in a, in a bad situation. It needs, it definitely needs that.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna delay things, because it's already been delayed long enough. I am concerned that, that was just the first time.
Well, the, the-